This hearing is for an appeal of a flood hazard violation notice dated 9/19/2023, submitted by Charles and Cheryl James for their property at 256 Depot Street, Proctorsville, in response to a violation letter dated 9/19/2023, which states that violation of the Cavendish flood hazard regulation has occurred. The violation is in reference to Section 6-C. The warning was posted October 20th, 2023 on the town's website. Town's posting board is published in the Revot Journal the week of October 23rd. So, how we're gonna handle this meeting? We're gonna, we'll hear testimony from the Jameses first. And after that, anyone wishing to address the piece of the planning commission, ask questions or provide comment will need to raise their hand. And I will address them, and then you can address the board. So what I'll do now is swear anybody in who wants to speak. Okay, raise your right hand. Okay. All right. Do you solemnly swear? The evidence that you shall give relative to the cause now under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Okay. So, we'll hear from the Jameses first. If you wanna give us a kind of chronology of what happened that day. Okay, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, I'm Charles James, and I'm the resident on 265 Depot Street here. Did the appeal on the violations. And just so, I'll start off with, this is all due to the flood. We got severely flooded inside and out. Been working seven days a week since the flood. Exhausted, all my funds on build back. I do have started to work, gutted the inside of my home, and then decided three or four days later, we got hit with flash flood again. So, at that point, after I was dried out, I decided to go outside and build back on my, build back on the outside. I started by, I've had tons of silt and debris and river debris that was in my backyard, side yard, through the driveway and into my neighbor's house, which is Donovan's house in his backyard, which I lost a lot of yard. So, I started by scraping all up, and yes, I brought in new fill. I took old fill to get down so I could have gravel before I put my lawn back. Everything was put back at the same elevations and what I had in my yard. I did plant trees, and I did put a border. And I believe that there's issues with the border of my properties. Is one of the biggest issues here, that is why I'm here, that I have built a berm. Not knowing, I did plant my trees very close together for privacy reasons because my neighbors on, not sure their address, but Christina LeBurm and Eric Evans live, that we have spotted cameras, which they have told us they had cameras in their windows aiming in our windows before the flood, and they can see everything we are doing in our yard. I did note that there is cameras in the windows. At that point, we're putting evergreens in to get some privacy. I was putting them very close together for the privacy, and without mounding them individually, I put them all together, not knowing, totally not knowing that I was building a berm, which I'm willing to work with the town to make things right as far as if I have to redo some of my work. At that time, I also installed, trying to get my border because of my neighbors on that side were giving us very, very lots of trouble and very much threatening and standing and on the borderline, watching, videoing me and cursing at me and telling me all kinds of different things. So I decided to put a split rail fence up. Not liking fences, but I put a split rail fence up, try to keep our border. I had the dirt mound, and I put the evergreen trees in totally for privacy, but that didn't hurt, work. At that time, I did have problems with the neighbors as they came over, vandalized my yard, took out some of my, took out one of the trees. We had so much intense stress with these people, and decided to put up like an inexpensive stockade fence. At that time, I was under the understanding that I needed to keep the fence up off the ground to have water filtration underneath it. Once again, not knowing I had a berm for that kind of reason, and I was in violation, but at that time, I believe it was my neighbors that identified the issue to the town and made it an issue. So, the stockade fence went up, trying to have these neighbors leave us alone after threatening to my wife. My wife has breast cancer and been dealing with that, and she's been trying to stay calm and stressed, but boy, my neighbors didn't let it go. They had this stress with her, "We don't care if you die, we're gonna burn your house down, and we're gonna make your lawn and your yard turn terrible." I'm gonna end it at that, but I'm here to, willing to work with the town on how to resolve the issue with the berm. Now I'm very much understanding the limitations of flood restrictions and zoning with the town that I never knew about because all this time, I've lived there for 30 years, that I realized there's no zoning. So I didn't realize I had to research things like this. But now I do, so I'm here to resolve the issue. All right, thank you.
Okay, well, I think we should hear from the Evanses. Did you distribute this to the Jameses?
No, they need a copy.
Okay.
I have a way to do so. They all have one, I have one.
All right.
Okay. So.
Go for it.
Okay.
I will go first. Yep, I'll go first, and then my husband's gonna, I just, I am, I just wanted to say, I have something I wanted to say, if that's okay?
Sure.
Yeah. So, me and my husband, we own 293 Depot Street. We believe the town manager was correct in issuing this violation to our neighbors at 265 Depot Street. Following the flooding event on July 10th and again on July 18th, we witnessed hundreds of yards of material delivered and used to construct a new berm on the upstream edge of the property at 265 Depot Street. The material was also used to add additional height to the existing berm along the brook behind their home to fill in the, to fill in the property, and to fill in the property, raising the entire grade several feet. As neighbor immediately upstream, we believe this poses a significant flood hazard to our home and is in violation of the town flood management plan. The Jameses' appeal of violation argues that the trees planted will help stabilize the bank. While we agree, we believe they should have been planted flush with the existing grade, not in a raised mound two to three feet above the existing grade level. Additionally, after receiving the violation letter, the Jameses built a stockade fence. We believe the fence poses additional hazards obstructing the flow of water from our upstream, from our upstream property. As water would back up behind the berm, then be caught behind the fence, effectively raising the berm another six feet in height. The section of the fence along the stream are installed in the top of the bank that eroded significantly during the flood. We fear that additional erosion will occur, causing the panels to fall into the brook. These could get stuck at any number of points along the brook and make any flooding worse by creating a dam. Notably, the opening where the brook passes under Pratt Hill is prone to clogging during a flood. While our home did not get flooded inside during the storm, storms in July, water was inches from going over our slab. Multiple items in our yard floated away. If 265 Depot Street remains in its current state, we believe that a flood event at the level of Irene or July 10th will significantly impact our home by flooding throughout the first floor living space, destroying wiring, appliances, mechanicals, and our personal belongings. We do utilize the FIP insurance. However, the violations on our neighbor's property will likely draw scrutiny from the program and the insurers putting future participants at risk. We handed out, the handouts have several pages of images showing the property prior to the flooding and during the construction this past summer. My husband was gonna talk about that.
Yep. So, I mean, I was just gonna run through this, we just go, just trying to.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Evans.
Yeah, I just was just making sure I'm understanding this. Like, what the state is saying is that the issue is not a state level issue, it's a town regulation. Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
It's, I can only speak for my somewhat narrow style of state government. This is a local floodplain issue.
Okay, that's why I was just, okay, I was just clarifying that that's what was being said in that.
So there would be.
So, I'm sorry, I just wanna clarify. I am saying that, I don't know what the governor's office is saying. I don't, I don't speak for Tim McNamara, I don't speak for Scott Jensen. I speak for my narrow component of the Rivers program, sure.
And that was just, I was just like, that's what I was here, trying to, that's what I was understanding from that voicemail also, is that it seemed to be a local issue, not necessarily a state one. I guess, that was my observation.
Sir.
My name is Mike Kinnahan, I'm friends with the Jameses, I've known them for many years. Resident of actually Reading for months, next town over, apologies. You know, it's the, I've been coming to the property since 2007. I've noticed zero significant change to the property outside of the berm. I know the Evans made the comment that, you know, they brought in truckloads and truckloads but of fill, and, but they also didn't show the amount of silt and stuff that was removed and how much good quality loom that was off their backyard that got swept down the river, swept off their property. So, I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, as I've seen the property over, you know, many years, almost 20 years, you know, there's been no material change, in my opinion, of what they've done to the backyard. I think as you folks saw, they did kind of carve out a portion of the yard to put in a drain just to prevent their house because their house was devastated by the flooding. Also, you know, some of the pictures are interesting because, again, you know, you can look at pictures from different angles, and so, you know, they look great on a presentation, but anybody who's done any fishing, when you hold a picture of a fish out a little further, it looks a lot bigger. So I think you need to be cautious when you look at the, you know, pictures as evidence. And then lastly, I would say that, you know, they've highlighted certain sections of the rules, and they've made statements, but I would also argue that the Jameses have made, you know, mitigating factors within the fences and made gaps, and they've raised them up, so there is a pathway for the water to go through, as you can see. And some of the comments that they've made, I don't think they're engineers. So, you know, some of this is clearly speculation on their part. So, again, I'm not an expert, I just think this whole thing is really sad that neighbors couldn't kind of work it out. But I will just testify that what I saw the Jameses go through, I helped them, you know, for months to try to clean up their property, renovate their house, and it was just absolutely awful. A lot of people in this town suffered, and I feel badly for them. I just think this is just kind of unnecessary aggravation for all involved, and it's just really a shame.
Cameron Evans, I'm actually Eric's mom. So, is there any regulations on what can be built within so many feet of a stream bank, a riverbank? Is there anything, are you, is this area in a floodplain, is it?
It's in the river corridor stream setback.
Okay.
So basically, in a nutshell, the regulations state that within 50 feet of the top of the stream bank, you can't have any fill, you can't have any obstructions. You can certainly plant trees. If you have a structure that is within the 50-foot setback, you cannot add on towards the stream. You can add behind the structure. So, and we can reference that. There's a table, people wanna look at the regulations. It's on page five, it has allowable, basically it has permitted uses, conditional use review, prohibited, and exempted. So if you look under prohibited is where the river corridor setback, there's new structures, storage.
Tim, I had a question.
Sure.
Is there, when you planted all those trees there, typically, like in my landscaping experience, we dig a big hole, put them in there. Occasionally, you're digging in by hand, you don't quite get that, that far down, they end up staying a little higher. Is there a reason why you didn't bring, you know, have them flush with grade?
Yes, and that's why I wanted to stand up and say. So, so when we, when we planted the tree line, the water line, the flood had come through, and it took out a lot of our property. There was silt everywhere before that, yes. Like when you dig down, we have so much clay in our backyard. So you can't plant the tree, so, 'cause the clay, it won't adhere to clay, your trees will just die. We've already had this experience with going down our driveway. When we planted the trees down the driveway, we had to, you know, have loom and stuff and mound those up. But as you can see, like when you come down our driveway on Donovan's side, like all the dirt has now like settled because it was just dirt. And we've had to replace a few trees because they actually just die because there's nothing to protect them. So when I was talking to Tim McNamara, he said, you know, you build up the dirt around the trees to cover the roots because the ground is so wet right now, our ground looks like it's higher because right now, it looks like a sponge. Because the flood has come in, there's been so much rain, and the, the ground hasn't had a chance to actually settle down. And when it does, it's just like FEMA told me, it will settle probably 18 to 24 inches after the, the water starts to dissipate. But right now, the ground is so saturated. And if you don't put the dirt around the trees and the rock around the trees, there's a reason that you do it in order. But we brought in some gravel, we brought in some loom. My husband removed all the silt. We have a picture of our backyard right here, too, where it took out the backyard, right up to the house. Okay, and if you guys want that, I'm willing to submit that. And the cameras from their property.
You'd like to see that, please. The other photos that are pertinent to all of this.
This, I don't know, watch this. Okay, so this right here is like, this was all dug out right here. They used shovels to try to put the dirt back, but right here, we found a crack in the foundation. So, and this is where the flood had come through. And it literally made like gullies in the back of the yard. And then we had the silt, do you have the picture of the silt on Donovan's side? And like the gravel and stuff? So, and then.
Charles, what does this show?
This one right here is when the flood first started to happen, and what happened was the river started filling up, well, I'm sorry, started filling up. And then this right here is our mound, and the previous mound, okay? And so the water hadn't come over it yet, and the whole backyard started to fill with the water. And then the floodwaters come in at an angle on our property. Christina's is here and ours is here, and it comes in out that corner of the fence that I showed you guys. But this is where it started the flood, but it hadn't come over yet until FEMA started letting some water out. And when they let the water out, it just like came in everywhere. And that's what pictures I sent, sent me.
People let water out.
That book isn't even hooked up to the.
No, the only, what I understand, just because I, we got flooded on Pleasant Street, is once the dams finally got to a point where they could not take on any more water, and those spillways started doing. That's, that's sexy way.
Van Gyl, Mr. Van Gyl or, and Mudlock, I talked to him. And he says, yeah, 'cause it had to trickle out because it was like at the top.
The dams did exactly what they were designed to do.
Exactly, and that's when.
A standpipe couldn't take the excess precipitation. It filled up above the standpipe, it went out the emergency spillway because there was all kinds of misinformation.
Yeah, that's when Joel broke about.
About Flo and FEMA letting, letting, like they like opened a floodgate, but there isn't any hope.
No.
Right, and Mr. Van Gyl, so it would trickle out, and that's what happened around like 2:00.
And that's the videos that I sent Christina and Eric because then all of a sudden, their property started flooding. But in the meantime, ours was already flooding. It was coming right through that channel, like at the corner where the fence meets the fence. And it was coming right through there. And then it, like around 2:00, I think it was, somewhere around there, I was so scatterbrained. Like, I sent those guys the videos because then it just started coming in everywhere.
Those, those that were here while the flood was going on, on the, on that day, when we called it, it rained, rained a lot. It got to be towards around noon, and it was actually calming down a little bit. And then it started at 1:30. That's, that's when, that's when the rivers really rose quickly.
Yep. Because we thought we were safe for a little while.
But it has nothing to do with, with dams being defective. They operated exactly like they were supposed to.
Oh no, I'm not saying it's defective, I'm just saying that, you know, all of a sudden, like around 2:00, 2:20.
That's when the dams were full.
Yeah, that's when it just started coming in, and it was like crazy. But back to your question that you had asked me, like about the trees, that the trees, like when we talked to FEMA, we talked to Tim, we talked to even Scott, we talked to everybody. And like we even called the state about the trees. Because there is, if you look at WCAX News, just a couple of weeks ago, the state came in, the town came in, and they helped this man with his whole property. And he has a lot of property, I can't quite remember his name, but I have it on my phone in WCAX News. They were helping them re-plant all these trees to stop the water. It doesn't like totally stop the water, but trees will suck up the roots. And you think that these guys would be happy about that because those trees, when they actually plant themselves down, when the earth isn't so spongy right now, and they settle down, and they probably will, maybe we're gonna have a hot summer, I don't know next year, I can't predict what's gonna happen. But when those trees start settling down, but they need the rock on the top, and maybe we got too much, and maybe that's what everybody's looking at as it's too much fill. But water will flow through rock, it doesn't stop it. The fence is off the ground like this much, as I tried to show you guys. And there's a channel all the way along the fence. And then it's the trees. And the only reason I put that fence in, 'cause I hate fences, is because she was threatening me, and I have the video where they were digging up my tree. I called the sheriff and the police because they were coming in my backyard. That's the only reason for the fence. I would never put up a fence, I hate them. I, that's why, hence, I put the trees first. I tried to do nature. Then they went and got a surveyor. Then I put in my property line because there's already property blocks that my father-in-law put in years ago when Nick Gouley did the first survey. And so there's blocks all the way down.
This doesn't pertain to what the flood, that's what we're talking.
So, the tree line, I put the tree line in so it bordered the property for us for privacy and for safety because they were threatening us.
And the only reason I asked about the height is just in my years of landscaping stuff, I've never planted them that high. And typically, the, the worry there is, is they're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to really root in, and they can, wind can be a big thing.
Well, the big trees were actually in the front of our house, and we moved those over there. And so we had to put in a lot more dirt, like the ones near the deck, looking off the deck right there, the center, between our house and theirs. I put the big trees there because they had cameras in their house looking into our house because they told us.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, I understand.
I know, I'm just, I'm just telling why I put the big trees in. So, the big trees, yes, it looks like a lot of dirt and rock there, but that's why it looked so big because the trees were so big. And they are huge, huge trees.
Do you know, do you remember the Evanses ever venture on on the property and attempt to remove trees?
Never crossed the property line to do so.
Never crossed every line. We have, we have a survey map, and.
Are we, I think we're starting to deviate from topic, but.
But I know you asked for a survey map. And I just wanted to say, they planted trees and put up the fence on our property. And the berm that they added more fill to is actually on our property. And I had spoken to the town manager here and said, I don't want this violation on my property because I didn't actually do this.
This is the berm that was constructed after the July flood?
The, yeah.
No, constructed after Irene, had and built taller after the July flood.
And which berm are we discussing?
Discussing the back berm.
The one, the one that parallels the river?
The one that parallels the river. Correct. And all their statements have nothing to do with what has been happening. And if this conversation has to go that way, I had asked that it didn't go that way because they're making false statements under oath, under oath. And that is not okay. So, I'm not okay with sitting here and feeling like I'm being attacked by someone and making false statements when I've called the police on them five times for harassing us.
No, for trespassing on your land.
And trespassing on my land.
For putting out subpoenas.
Yes, yes, because you were trespassing.
For walking the border line, no?
You were not walking the border line. So I don't wanna get into this conversation anymore, I just wanna move on and not talk about it.
We've heard enough about all the personal stuff.
But I know you had asked for a.
But I have the video of her. And Eric. Excuse me, can you please?
No, 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 no.
I have the video.
So Tim, we have no authority over that kind of stuff.
We don't, we don't. That's a still matter.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not wanting to be called a liar because videos on my family.
We just need to stop all this, please. It's all gotta, okay, we gotta, we're getting in the weeds here.
All right, stop, Christine, stop it, okay?
Okay.
Give him the survey map.
Can you give him the survey map?
You want the survey map?
I wonder if this comes down to a matter of, on whose property the berm is placed? Yes, that's relevant.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's an existing berm that's been there forever, and you guys even said that.
2000.
I actually, I did.
The bank has you wrote it.
And that's how I know you knew what a term berm was, by the way?
Stop.
And our pen has already written things.
Uh, it's the best I can can get, yeah. It's a copy of the property they're doing, it was some file here in the town office, nobody can get it right now, but. Yeah, however you wanna order it, this is their property, this is ours.
Oh, wait, it's on my phone.
That's their house, it's on your phone, too. 2006 is a date of this survey. Uh, just a, a half of this copy. It's just the same.
I have it on my phone if you need it.
Just of the original plan? The big one?
This isn't doing any good because.
You give him that one.
It's, it's a survey, and I know I asked you for that, but it doesn't show the placement of anything in relation to the property.
Right, okay.
All right.
I have it too on my phone.
So Tim, we're able to make a decision, we're weighing in on the new development that has occurred. So, my understanding is the fence and the. So my understanding is the fence and the the tree planting and the berm that was constructed from the corner of the existing berm parallel to the Evanses home.
Uh, yes, what, the trees, no. Uh, trees are allowed, um, right.
You're correctly saying the fence isn't in violation.
Um, well, the.
Would the fence, the fence would be an obstruction.
When was the fence? Well, yeah, actually, I'll get to that, but I wanna get a handle on the timeline here. So there is a violation letter dated nine nineteen. When did the berm go in? Was that?
Way before.
A week before?
No, way before, like the.
Okay.
Late July.
Okay, how about the fence?
Uh, probably, maybe August.
It was the end of September because I called the police for them trespassing.
Late, late August.
It was September.
So I'm getting two days.
There's two fences.
Stockade first, right, okay, yeah, that was August.
Right. The the stockade fence, when did that go?
Yeah, uh, the stockade fence may have been about two weeks later, so sometime probably in September.
End of September, end of September.
Okay. End of September, okay.
I know.
All right. So we're actually, we're, what this hearing is for is where the fence, anything fifty feet back from the top of the streambank, the fence and the new berm constructed fifty feet back from the stream, top of the streambank.
Right.
So I don't see the fence on there though.
Well, the fence was.
Was, pardon, my appeal was the fifty feet setback from the river for the berm.
And the fence was not there.
Well, it appears the fence was put in after the violation letter.
Uh, no, that was in before.
No, absolutely not, I have it right here.
All right, well, we're getting conflicting.
Yeah.
Oh, nor is it stating that the fence is in violation, so how is that admissible at all?
What's the date on the special, how?
Valid point. Yeah, okay.
Brad, Brad, I didn't see the fence, that's why that's not on the violation letter, when I wrote the violation letter, I didn't see it there.
Mine was.
Okay.
It would have been if I did, if I did see it.
Sure.
For this discussion.
Right. Okay, sir, you have a question?
I just had a question under section uh, C three, I guess it's um, six seat. Three, uh, it says prohibited development in special flood hazard area, river corridors and setbacks. And under three, it says new fill except as necessary to elevate structures above the base flood elevation. Can you clarify what exactly that means?
Uh, that would be if you're building a new home.
Only new property or does that also apply to existing?
If you're raising an existing structure to.
Yeah.
Right, that's right.
Sure, go ahead.
Can I chime in? Structure under a flood hazard regulation has a very specific meaning and it's probably in the back of its definitions. It's four rigid walls and a roof. So that's new fill except as necessary to elevate like a physical structure.
Okay.
So that doesn't relate to.
So a fence isn't a structure?
Correct, a fence, under the flood hazard bylaws, it's not a structure. Not looking at the definitions, but I suspect it's not.
And I have September twenty ninth of the month.
Okay, all right.
So that would be after the violation letter was dated?
That's right, violation letter was the nineteen, or.
Yep.
September nineteen.
Mr. Chambers, is there an issue with the the fence? It, would there be a new violation that would need to be issued in order to have that on the record, if that's what we need to do?
I I would think that you could cover this under this same, um, this same violation, the same appeal so we can do it all at once and come up with one conclusion instead of having a new violation and a new hearing.
Okay.
And move, to move on.
Do the regulations specifically say no fences or no structures?
Uh, well, the.
Or no, no, can't touch it at all, is it not specific?
Yeah, fence would be considered a structure if it's within the.
But it's not by definition.
It's a, it's um, I saw it in under obstruction.
Obstruction, that's correct.
Um. But they built it in a manner that it doesn't obstruct. And they were told by the state that it didn't obstruct.
So just in the, in the definition, obstruction includes but is not limited to any dam, wall, wharf, embankment, levee, dike, pile, abutment, protection, excavation, channelization, bridge, conduit, culvert, building, wire, fence, rock, gravel, uh, fill, structure, vegetation.
But it's twenty-four inches up off the ground too.
Excuse me, when they, when I looked into it, because I know at this time we got issues, it was like as long as it was off the ground so water could flow underneath the fence and the fence wasn't all the way to the ground, um, then then the fence was okay, that was my research, John.
Where was that done, sir?
Where was that done?
Yeah, what, what are you referencing, the flood hazard regulations, the definitions?
I believe I saw it in the flood regulation or maybe it was on on like the state website, yeah. But I I would, that's how I was told, as long as you don't put the fence all the way tight to the ground to provide a dam for the water, then you can put it in, we strictly put it in for privacy anyway and, you know, those issues. Um, but I was told as long as I keep it off the ground so the groundwater can go through there, then it was okay.
Right, I guess the issue is how high does it need to be to allow flood, floodwaters to pass?
Uh, if you guys can tell me now how high it needed to be and if it's not high enough under your your situation, I'm willing to raise it. In that, in that fifty-foot area where you guys have the restrictions.
Talking about the bottom of the fence?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And this is the stockade?
From the ground up, if you want it, if you'd like it raised up.
This is a stockade fence between the two properties, right?
No, we're concerned with the fifty-foot regulation area with, not the whole fence, but in that one spot where we have the issue with the flood hazard regulations within fifty feet from the corner. If you guys need feel, you know, like you need that raised up, I can raise it up certainly another six, twelve inches.
And I guess the other, the other issue is that panel fence that was put up along the streambank?
Oh, well, that's uh, that there, I mean, that's off the ground, so.
But that's within fifty feet. And the problem with that is that we have another flood event, that bank gets eroded and their fence is coming down and creating a hazard downstream and possibly causing, you know, a dam and a blockage at a culvert point. So that's the issue with that panel fence um, along the streambank.
I wouldn't have put it up if they hadn't come up trying to dig up my trees. I don't like fences. And this is what this is about.
Okay, well, we, you've covered that and it's on record.
Okay. But I'm just saying, I I mean, I don't have a problem like taking the fence as long as these two people.
Okay, that's not necessary, again, you're re, you're rehashing over and over, we're beyond that.
Well, I'm not trying to, but I don't.
Well, she's saying that we're, we'll, we'll probably be in the situation to remove the fence.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem.
Totally, because we're here to resolve this issue.
Yeah, you stated at the beginning that you were willing to work with the town.
Yes, sir.
And we understand that. So again, so our issues are.
If you guys can give me a certain amount of time maybe to remove it, um, then I'm willing to remove it. If you could give me maybe like eight months, we're getting into freeze, frozen ground right now and to do it properly, I would prefer to do it in the spring, but not when it's too wet in May.
So we're still putting our downstairs together?
Yeah, so we're, the three things I think we're looking at is that panel fence along the streambank. We're looking at the tree line and trying to make that less of a berm.
Yes, sir.
For the, so that water can flow through there, even though that, you know, water will erode that probably, but right now, the optics is that it's a berm and then the stockade fence that is put up will, those are the three things that we'll be looking at and addressing.
Okay, so uh, let me just refer to those three items so we can maybe resolve things and we can all go have happy Thanksgiving. One, I will re, with am, with uh, time, ample time from the town, I will remove the fencing on the riverbank. As far as the fence goes from the fifty-foot setback on the property line, if I could raise that so I could still have my privacy, I would prefer to do that on my fifty feet for the property line, so I could have my privacy and a peace of mind. Whether it be, if you guys feel comfortable, it's fine where it is, or you feel it'd be better to go eight, ten or twelve inches, I'm willing to move that fifty feet raised. As far as the tree line in that fifty-foot zone, to resolve the heavy-duty berm issue, I would be willing to leave my trees alone so they started to root already, it's been quite a few months, and trench out in between those trees in the fifty-foot area so it is no longer a berm and water could flow through there.
And just make it round around them like that, we were trying to do, first place.
Once again, once again, I will willing to do that if you can give me some ample time.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that and and further discussion within, within the um, the board. But we appreciate that, we appreciate that, you saying that on record. And so we'll have to consult amongst us and with the select board, you know, if that's going, going to mitigate the violations and and, you know, move forward from it. Go ahead.
Uh, my other question was like, does this violation also like encompass the fill that was added in addition to the berms? Like the fact that their property is several feet higher, probably a foot and a half higher than it used to be. And, and if, if.
And it's.
Okay, let me rephrase that then. I believe their property is a foot and a half higher than it used to be. Um, can we somehow verify that it's, you know, that their property remains downstream of ours as it has been? Like the pictures that I take, that I took where you can clearly see, there's no obstructions all the way down, like, I I don't know what, I I have grade measurements on my side, I don't have them from the, I I I don't like.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chambers, is there any issue with the grade or any evidence of the neighbor's property being higher now due to the addition of fill?
I, when I was there, I I thought it was, but when I was there, it was at the very beginning when, you know, um, they were having to remove stuff as well. I think we've heard in this hearing that the grade was apparently similar um, to what it was before from, from uh, some sworn in people. So I couldn't say for a hundred percent sure that, that it's uh, any higher. And on that, no, I think, Tim, we also ought to address the fact that we did get another letter from a budding landowner as well. An address that we received it in the open, you know, in this meeting as well, because that, that also has some pertinent information.
Okay.
Excuse me, so these are uh, from another neighbor in the front area that used to be all attached.
There's that's a lot of information.
Yeah, we got that in an email, thank you.
That's, I did get that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, getting back to the fence, um, one concern I have is raising it, is how high does the fence would have to be raised to allow a flood to go under? Uh, we're not engineers, so I would be hesitant to give a height limit.
I don't have a good answer for that one either.
Right.
Is that something we were probably looking to Scott Jensen for, send it in email? John, do you have anything to weigh in on that?
I don't think that you could because it's not in a FEMA-mapped flood hazard area, this is in the river corridor. So FEMA maps flood hazard areas based on depth, right? This is how deep the water's gonna be, the river corridor is, here's where the water's going to be laterally. So I don't think, I I certainly wouldn't give you an elevation and I don't, I'm not speaking for Scott, you can certainly ask him, but I'd be a real suspect that you would do something like that as well. I mean, you could use, you could arguably use this flood, you know, as, as a, as a base point, right?
Would it fall under a potential hazard due to the, a flood of this event happening again? That debris and that fence, that stock, um, stockade fence coming down and and creating a, a, just more debris? Would that, could you, would be, would we be able to articulate that?
That is the risk of additional development within the river corridor, that's why it's, it's largely prohibited as your bylaws say. Whether, you know, the tricky part is the river corridor is like, we know that stream's gonna move, we know it's gonna occupy that space, that fifty feet on either side at some point. Might be the next time it rains, might be ten years from now, might be a hundred years from now, we don't, we don't know. Science tells us that's, that's where the stream will be.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
As far as, this is a very constructive type of a comment. I did attend a river and stream type, I I can't remember the organization, last week at the Ludlow Town Hall, there was several members from the state, rivers and streams, trout, dams, blah, blah, blah. One thing I picked up there that they commented on was, when I was listening only, uh, was with a berm. Uh, once they had a road and they had the river stream and then they had a berm and then on the other side of the berm was a field. When the state came through and redid it, everything after a flood, they put it back the same exact way uh, with the berm between the road and the stream, but they would have preferred to have the stream, um, no, no, they would have rather have the stream, the berm between the road and the stream and let the spillway go over on the, on the field, which makes a lot of sense as far as my property where whatever is there towards my house is there, but the woods and all that area and where it did spillway in there, as you could see after the flood, there was silt in the woods for fifty feet, which acts as a spillway pretty much for the backup. I mean, it's just a constructive type of, of a, of a statement for all, for all of us to gather on while we're here, if you, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm not very good at it, but.
Yeah, because if you look at the brook when it flows, it kind of channels in towards our house and then like Christina's property goes flat in the back and then it comes around the corner and then it comes in the corner of where the fence is like this. So when the water, it raises to a certain level, like it doesn't come over where our berm has been for years, it literally overflows on the opposite side of the property, so it gives it a free-flow area and it goes down because all of that, like it goes a quarter of the way up the bank and the back.
Oddly, you're talking about the opposite side of the property, you mean the other side of the brook?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because it like literally goes a quarter of the way up the brook and all the water's flowing on that property because Christina wanted to like redirect the, the brook and that's what she talked to Scott Jensen about and he said he couldn't do that. So, but it already freeflows over to that side anyway and it fills right up on that side. So you literally look like you're looking at, you know, a river rather than a brook this size. It turns into like the river because it flows way over on that side. And it goes down and meets the Black River down behind um, Craig Goodman's house.
Yep, okay, go ahead Christina.
So when Scott Jensen came out to my house, he had, did not say we could not do that, he said we have to get approval.
Could not do what?
Could not, he did not, she just said that Scott said we could not put a channel over on the other side.
Yeah.
He said we have to get approval, which we have not done because we've been busy doing the things.
You'll, you'll never get.
And so.
That just isn't gonna happen.
So.
He, he, he said what he, he goes, said.
So, yeah, I understand that, that's fine. But anyways, what he said, because our bank used to be a lot higher and in Irene, I did not have a single drop of water in my yard from Irene. But what he said was, the reason when the book, brook backed up, part of the reason in the second storm, it went in their property and went around their berm because it found the lowest point. But it wouldn't have flooded the way it flooded the second time if they didn't have that original berm. That's what he told us when he was there, so.
Okay, how, how high was the water, like what was the depth of the flood at its peak from the ground up? Do you have like an estimate?
Um, I, give me a second, actually.
And what you mean by that, after the waterfall?
Well, like how deep was the water, like during the peak flood?
When it, you have peak flood.
Like was it like a, what, to be?
On the peak flood, it was up, it was up above my knees.
So on my property, it wasn't because my slab is only about this high. So it didn't go, it got to the edge of my slab, but not inside my house, so it could have only been this high. But it also, like I said in my, in what I wrote, is it went, it also went up on the banks, higher up. So the property next to us, which his bank is even higher, it came up over that and around up my driveway and around my house and around. and around into their, into the James's property. So it didn't just go up my bank, it went up my neighbor's bank because the river kept backing up because the.
Which which neighbor?
The neighbor next to us of.
Uh, upstream, uh.
Two.
Three fifteen?
Three fifteen, three fifteen.
Uh, temple.
It's only up.
Temple.
Okay.
Yeah. So it went up there, it went up his bank too, because he has like tons and tons of silt on the other side of that stockade fence.
The black river was full, so everything backed up.
Right.
So I just want to add to Christina's, like in the back by our house was the picture I gave you where you know, dug out around our house right there, in the back, it was like up my knees. So, but in the front and on the side, you could walk out and it was only up, you know, just past your ankles in the front of the house, so it had two different levels, in the back level, it was really deep, but it was raging back through there. You know, when it when it finally cut loose around two o'clock, but before that, we didn't think like it was going to get bad. And that's why I was sending those guys the videos, because at first I thought, oh, we're in the free and clear, you know? And then all of a sudden, it hit like around a little after two o'clock, I think.
But my property didn't get flooded till after four. So those, it has a timestamp on those pictures, it says four something on it.
Four oh three?
Yeah, four oh three.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was sometime between three thirty and four, at our, that we could see it, I remember, but the timing, the timing's not relevant.
But ours was really flooded, but theirs hasn't hadn't flooded like all through their property yet, but ours did, because it came in that little corner right there where the fence needs. So it kind of just raced through there.
Yeah.
And then when ours filled up, then Christina's was like filling up, you know what I mean, it was kind of like backwards.
Yep, okay, so, um, I think I'd like to we'll either recess. If anybody has any other comments or questions, I'll give you one more chance.
Yeah, I, yeah, the only thing I was gonna add was just that um, we had spoken, I was just gonna say, yeah, we we had spoken about doing the uh, trying to get something done on the other side to allow something to go to flow out, no, it wasn't a full redirect of the stream or anything, it was trying to add like a relief valve or so, like, so it would go that way first instead of coming up over on our side. Um, that hasn't gotten really anywhere. Um, the state, there was a couple, somebody from the state was supposed to reach out, but we haven't heard anything and I ain't wrote the name down, so I didn't.
That would be quite an undertaking.
So, but um, but yeah, and so like on the other side, it's roughly I'm trying, I was trying, it's about a foot, it's almost a foot higher on the other side, so there was like, we figured out like we'd have to take down at least like six or eight inches for about fifteen feet to start building something, but it it is high, it's slightly higher on the other side.
It it is true though, that as the Black River was was absolutely back full.
As it was full, everything backed up.
Water that, water that's that's normally flows unimpeded into the into the river suddenly has no place to go and it starts to back up and it would keep backing up and backing up and backing up.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that's why our property got so flooded first and then theirs didn't hit afterwards, because it was like backing up everywhere.
Yeah.
So it's, it's the old saying, the only reason why there was a total devastation was the rain stopped.
Yeah.
Yes.
But then our basement, you know, our downstairs, that we have all our bedrooms in, that literally like flooded three times afterwards because we got it all dried up like, you know, within two days after the flood, but then the rain came down again.
The ground was so saturated, it had nowhere to go.
And then we flooded again. Did it like three times.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So, uh, board, we have, we can either recess the hearing if we need more information or we could close it and go into deliberative session. And then if we do close the hearing, we would have forty-five days to make a decision. So.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed. Um, the hearing is over.
How, when will we hear from you?
Thank you.
Five days.
We have forty-five days?
Yes.
So I'm hoping before that.
It has to be in writing.
Oh.
Yeah, in in writing, you'll you'll get a laugh.
Okay.
So.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, as far as the closing, uh, okay, I understand forty-five days.
Mm-hmm.
Because maybe you need to do a little research saying, you know, that fence needs to come all the way down or you'll be fine raising it up another twelve inches, the one I was talking about on the borderline, correct?
Um, yeah, there would be.
I mean, I understand that there's forty-five days.
Right.
Uh, I just want to understand, I won't get blindsided with like another like something stating it's like, oh, you're going to get fined, like.
Um, no, that's not our intention.
Find anybody? Yeah, I know, but that got me a little tricked up and it's like, oh my god.
No. That's just legal. This this wording that I had of seven days.
Yeah.
You can't do any more research into it, it's a hearing, I mean, sit on board, whatever's presented.
Well, just, we're just concerned, it's like there's snow coming.
Yeah, we're done.
It's only what's presented at the meeting, yeah.
And like, we're trying to finish our downstairs, you know, so we got bedrooms places to sleep, because we haven't finished it yet.
Yeah.
So we just don't know like what you were going to kind of like throw out, like when you would want it done, but concerned like we got the winter.
Yeah, winter's coming, I mean, we take that.
We.
We're willing to do, you know, whatever.
We can have a finding, we we we.
We will take that in consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll vote on a finding and then it goes to the select board and the select board then recontacts you.
One vote, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't believe it goes to the select.
That was my understanding also?
It would only be if there's like a finding.
Okay.
Right, right.
That's my point. See how much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, we're gonna go to deliberative session, I guess.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Rex.
Wanted a copy of the, if we're putting in that other, the letter, um, Christina just wanted a copy of that, um, seeing as how it's getting put into consideration.
Oh, yes.
So I was just looking for one.
Okay.
Do you do other business, so you have a according to your do we have other businesses in like a whole? Is it just the?